Happy New Year, everyone. I'm Kyra Mann, CEO of Mito Action, and I'd like to welcome you to today's 2022 Mitotown meeting. These past two years have by far been the most difficult years we've all experienced, but we made it through together. Through so much uncertainty, we've continued to push through to ensure we don't lose sight of continuing to get closer to approved therapies, continuing to move forward to ensure that individuals and organizations who work tirelessly to support this amazing Mitro community will be here to support you day in and day out, regardless of what's going on in the world. We are so excited to have each of you here with us today to share the victories of 2021 and look forward to what's to come in 2022. Mito Action's theme for this year, "Hope is on the Horizon", will continue to drive us, to motivate us, to inspire us all to have no doubt that we will see the day to approve therapies, the day for a cure. We will continue to work collaboratively with the community and never lose sight of why we are here, for each and every individual impacted by mitochondrial disease. There are so many great initiatives in the works and great things on the horizon. The Patient Act C groups, clinicians, researchers, and individuals who all work tirelessly to support our families, we will never be diverted. Together, we will continue to persevere and together, we will continue to press on. So before we start, a few housekeeping items. For all of our presenters, please make sure your videos are off and muted until it's your turn to share. Attendees, if you have questions, please use the Zoom chat feature at the bottom of your screen or free fill to email us at info@mitoaction.org. Today's call will be recorded and available later today on the Mito Action website at www.mitoaction.org and also on our podcast platforms, including iTunes, Google Play, and Spotify. We will also have a written summary that will be available in the coming weeks on the Mito Action website. So we have a full agenda today and are looking forward to hearing from the various organizations within our community about their plans for the coming year. I'm excited to kick us off and give you an update on the successes at Mito Action in 2021 and how we are continuing to grow in the ways we serve the Mitro community. Our small but mighty team has been hard at work, inspired by our community, never losing sight of the fact that our families depend upon us and are always making decisions with you as our priority. In 2021, we responded to thousands of requests for live support through our Mitro 411 Support Program. A new live chat feature and a growing number of international requests have allowed us to expand the ways in which we can deliver support to our community. This holiday season, we gifted more than 100 children and their siblings with Mitro Santa's Holiday Gifts to ensure that our Mitro kids didn't go without during the holidays. Our Second Annual International Metabolic Conference for Families Affected by Fatty Acid Oxidation Disorders had over 450 attendees from 20 countries. We had three full days of incredible presentations by leading experts from across the globe, families connected with one another, and the kids had a blast in their interactive sessions. We look forward to being in person in July in Pittsburgh for this year's event. In addition to the conference, Mitro Action will continue to expand how we support the FAOD community through new educational content and support opportunities. Through the Matthew Hardy Camper Fund Wishes Program, we now have the opportunity to grant once-in-a-lifetime wishes to our families. We are so excited about our partnership with Give Kids the World Village in Orlando, Florida. This partnership allows us to grant wishes to children affected by mitochondrial disease by providing magical experiences for the entire family. These once-in-a-lifetime wish trips will help families recapture some of the precious moments that may have been missed due to hospital stays, illness because of mitochondrial disease. If you're interested in nominating a family or even your own family, please be sure to visit the Mito Action website under Matthew Hardy Wishes to submit an application. The Mito Action team has taken a much more active role in legislative advocacy, signing on to dozens of bills to support the interests of the rare disease community, serving on legislative committees with various advocacy organizations, and spending time meeting face-to-face with key legislators. Our team has also been working hard to establish rare disease advisory councils in Michigan and Minnesota and supporting some of our families who are taking an active role establishing rare disease advisory councils in their local communities. We will have more opportunities for the community to raise your voice in the coming months on topics such as the CDC Guidelines for Pain, access to therapies, newborn screening, and more. So stay tuned for the ways that you can become involved. The Mito Action mobile app has made a huge impact for our community and we continue to consider the ways to expand the platform. Currently, we have over 600 active users enrolled on the platform. We are excited to share that in the coming weeks, Mito Action Mobile will be rebranded as MyMitro. The platform will be IRB-approved, allowing Mitro Action to take an active role in research for Mitro. We are thrilled to announce that we have finalized a data contribution agreement and will be collaborating with the Critical Path Institute for meaningful data collection initiatives for the Mitro community. We encourage our families to sign up for MyMitro to not only help manage your day-to-day journey with Mitro, but now make an important and meaningful impact in research for the mitochondrial disease community. For more information, visit www.mitoaction.org/mobile. This year, we also launched a new partnership with CureMitro and All Stripes to further impact the collection of critical data for research and therapy development. Through our initiatives related to Meelos and Lay's Syndrome, we are now opening the doors to ensure that researchers have access to the information they need. We look forward to announcing new opportunities to add additional diagnosis groups to this effort throughout 2022 and expanding these partnerships. In the next month or two, we also will be excited to share and announcing a new partnership to fund young investigators in mitochondrial disease. We are also excited to share that we will be launching a community survey to help us better understand how Mitro Action can continue to support you, better understand what is important to you and your family, your challenges, and how we can continue to move forward together in ways most meaningful to the community. You'll receive more information about the survey in the coming months. We look forward to continuing to expand our partnership with UMDF and the Mitochondrial Medicine Society for the Mitochondrial Care Network. Collaboration is incredibly important to Mitro Action and we look forward to working closely with all of the patient advocacy groups on various initiatives. We are truly stronger together. These are just a few of the highlights of the exciting opportunities we're working on at Mitro Action and we invite you to reach out to us to learn more about the ways for you to get involved. Next to share more about our support initiatives is a member of our patient support team, Stephanie Tomlinson.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for being here today and to do this wonderful recap that we kick off the new year with. I'm always excited to hear and share what we have going on. As you all know, it's been a year for everybody and patient support has really picked up steam with the addition of some of our partnerships like All Stripes, PTC, and Give Kids the World. We've really expanded into areas that have been absolutely, oh, I don't even know how to say, just absolutely captivating for me. One of the hallmarks of Mitro Action is our unwavering commitment to be a support space for all of those who are in the Mitro world. And each Friday, we have patients, families, caregivers, and clinicians call in to speak about their day-to-day with Mitro and at that time, we offer support and suggestions to one another. And I can say without doubt, it is my favorite hour of the week. As many of you know, I'm a Mitro parent and this past year has been one of the roughest for my warrior. And without this support group and fellowship, I know for certain I would not have handled it with as much grace as I did. We have also expanded our Mitro support calls to now include monthly calls specifically targeted to our FAOD families and we have added a men's support call. This is an opportunity for men who are affected with Mitro to connect with other men and speak candidly about their day-to-day struggles. These additional offerings have been met with great enthusiasm by the community and we look to hear from members to find out other ways we can specifically target what you need and hopefully find a way to make that happen. While the pandemic has kept us from meeting in person over the past two years, we are still offering Mitro socials and win-appropriate Mitro playdates. Again, these are opportunities for people in the Mitro sphere to connect with one another and lessen that feel of isolation that so many people talk about and experience. Our Mamba Kit group continues to grow and with the addition of new offerings for this group of women coming, I am sure people will want to stay connected or sign up to be part of this elite group. Our Mamba Kits offer a mentorship to other Mitro parents at any stage of their journey, from newly diagnosed to handling medications, family dynamics, and just offering pure fellowship and some much-needed laughter. This is an exciting time for the Mamba Kits as we are working this year to cultivate it to the next level. Patient support has taken on a new lane of having a live chat feature within our website. The first few days were a whirl, you can ask Jeannie, but we quickly learned how to field the numerous requests that were coming in. And the best part of live chat is we have the capability to speak with people all over the globe. I geek out when I see the places we are making an impact and offering hope to this somewhat dark place. 2022 has me committed to watching the hope that is on the horizon come to full light. When I read and hear all of the amazing, hard, complicated research that's happening, I am constantly taken aback that people really do want to find a treatment and make a difference. So thank you for joining us today and I hope you find all of the information shared as valuable as I do.
Thank you, Stephanie. And next up to close out Mitro Action's presentation and to share about our upcoming events is Jeannie Freeman.
Thanks, Kyra. And a huge thank you to everyone for taking the time out of Friday afternoon to be here with us to learn what is on the horizon in 2022. The last year, actually, the last few years have been such a whirlwind and we're grateful to all of you for sticking by our side and just being there to support the Mitro community. So I'd like to share with you some of the ways we'll make a difference in 2022 for patients and families affected by Mitro by increasing awareness about mitochondrial disease across the globe. We plan to host our annual signature events back in person this year, but with the impact we saw from virtual events and the ability for participants to join from wherever they are, each event will incorporate a virtual component as well. In April, we will hold the Ninth Annual Matthew Hardy Mitro Classic at the North Andover Youth Center in Massachusetts. This event brings together middle school kids, high school kids, and even some teachers to play street hockey and raise awareness about Mitro in honor of Matthew Hardy, who passed away at the age of eight. The Thirteenth Annual Sandra K. Russell Derby Day Benefit for Mitro will take place on May 7th at Boston's Royal Night Club. This is a Kentucky Derby-themed event and it's full of excitement, violent and live auctions, pet and bow tie contests, Southern Fair, and much more. In July, in partnership with INFORM, we will host the Third Annual International Metabolic Conference for Families Affected by Fatty Acid Oxidation Disorders at the Wyndham Hotel in Pittsburgh. In August, 10 members of Team Mitro Action will take part in the 50th Annual Sound the Thrill Race in Massachusetts. In September, Mitro Action will kick off Mitochondrial Disease Awareness Week with the 18th Annual Energy Walk in Boston and the Fourth Annual Energy Walk co-hosted by the Payne family in Syracuse, New York, that honors their 11-year-old daughter who lives with Mitro. In October, we will hold the Ninth Annual Matthew Hardy Golf Tournament in North Andover, Massachusetts, at the North Andover Country Club and we will co-host the Fourth Annual Energy Walk in Rochester, New York with the Myers family, who lost their dad and their uncle to mitochondrial disease. As events continue to take place virtually, this allows you the opportunity to easily host your own fundraising event for Mitro Action. Some ideas for you include hosting your own satellite energy walk or even a golf tournament, a restaurant night, a virtual paint night, a direct sales online party, or a Facebook fundraiser. The possibilities are truly endless. For details on any of the events that I've just mentioned, you can visit our website at www.mitoaction.org/events. I'd also like to mention a few of the financial assistance programs that Mitro Action offers. In 2021, six students with mitochondrial disease were awarded Matthew Hardy Memorial Scholarship. Applications for the upcoming 2022-2023 school year will open following this call today and the deadline to submit those applications is May 31st, 2022. If you have a high school senior or currently enrolled college student, you should think about applying for the scholarship. Our scholarship recipients are pursuing careers in early childhood education, nursing, psychology, pre-med, biomedical engineering, physical therapy, law, and more. You can visit mitoaction.org/scholarship to learn more or apply. The Marcel's Way Family Fund was born out of the mission of continuing to improve the quality of life for all affected by mitochondrial disease and offers families financial assistance to assist with the cost of necessary but expensive things such as wheelchairs, adaptive equipment, time lost from work during hospital stays, medications, telemedicine appointments, and various other things. For more information on that, you can visit mitoaction.org/marcelsway. And then I just wanted to mention another program that we launched in 2021 called Another Helping. One of the daughters of, one of the, actually, as the host of the men's support call, I'm sorry, his daughter came to Mitro Action with a vision for a program that would combine her love for baking and helping others. And together with her, we brought her vision to life and formed Another Helping. So Another Helping is a program, there's a website page too, but you can order cupcakes and she takes those funds, the proceeds of the cupcake orders, funds. She's got four programs, one a quarter. The Matthew Hardy Camper Fund, Marcel's Way, Mitro Santas, and then Education Support and Advocacy. So you can go to our website to learn more about that. And then if you have any questions on anything that I've mentioned today, please feel free to reach out to me and my email is jeanneie@mitoaction.org.
Thank you so much, Jeannie. As you can see, we've been extremely busy at Mitro Action, working hard every day to continue to grow our programs to serve our families to the best of our ability. And if you have any questions or would like to know more, please reach out to us directly. So kicking us off, I would like to welcome Rini McCarthy, CEO of Stealth Biotherapeutics. Welcome, Rini.
Thank you so much, Kyra, and thanks to Mitro Action for inviting us here today. Happy New Year to everyone. Glad to ring in the new year with the Mitro community. At Stealth, we're really focused on three main areas in our quest to develop mitochondrial-targeted medications. So we have programs in neurology, in cardiology, as well as in ophthalmology. And I'll give you a brief update, very brief update, on what we're doing at Stealth this year. So when we think about mitochondria, which we know are essential for human health, I want to draw your attention to the mitochondria in yellow on this video in the left. It's not just a single organelle sitting by itself in its cell. It's very dynamic, it's interacting. It's really a network, kind of like an energy grid. And so you can see that energy grid here in muscle. So when mitochondria produce energy, a byproduct of that energy production is oxidative stress. And in small amounts, that's fine, but in large amounts, what you're seeing here in mitochondria undergoing oxidative stress is that it degrades components of the mitochondria, including the cristae architecture, those stripes in the inner mitochondrial membrane. The cristae are really important because the curvature of those helps to keep our electron transport chain in close proximity and really optimize ATP production and minimize oxidative stress. Over on the right, you can see when that damage is done, you get a relaxation of that architecture and that really triggers more and more oxidative stress production. And that's largely due to degradation of cardiolipin, which is the target for our drug. So L-meritide is interacting with cardiolipin in the inner mitochondrial membrane, aggregating it and protecting it from that peroxidation and damage. And with that, what we see, you can see that dysfunctional mitochondria in the middle here, over to the right with L-meritide, we see improvements in mitochondrial morphology and importantly, in the bottom, improvements across that cellular energy grid, so across that mitochondrial network. With our next-generation compound, SBT272, we've really designed that to get into the brain in higher concentrations than L-meritide does. So for diseases of mitochondrial dysfunction where the primary clinical symptoms are neurological, for example, seizure disorders, even diseases like ALS or mitochondrial in nature, this compound, SBT272, will be important for us for development purposes. So kicking off with our neurology program, L-meritide, we're studying still in primary mitochondrial myopathy. And then 272, as I mentioned, we're bringing into the clinic in a Phase 1 trial and looking at diseases like ALS. So in our prior mitochondrial myopathy program, our MM Power 3 program, we were studying patients who had mutations in both their mitochondrial DNA and their nuclear DNA. What we saw when we analyzed the results from that trial was that the patients with nuclear DNA mutations, there we saw significant improvements in exercise capacity on 6-minute walk with L-meritide therapy. So we are kicking off a new power Phase 3 clinical trial focusing on nuclear DNA mutations in patients with primary mitochondrial myopathy. Of particular interest for us are mutations in genes that encode for the mitochondrial replosome. So the most common of those genes would be genes like PolG or Twinkle, but you can see the full list here on this slide. What is the mitochondrial replosome? So there are genes in the nucleus of our cells that encode for proteins that make up the replosome of the mitochondria. That's where mitochondrial DNA is replicated. As with other genetic mutations affecting mitochondria, when there are mutations in these genes, we start to see excess oxidative stress that will be damaging for cardiolipin. And that's a problem not just for the inner mitochondrial membrane, but also because the replosome is anchored to the inner membrane by cardiolipin and because cardiolipin is helping to allow the importation of those nuclear encoded proteins. So our new power Phase 3 clinical trial is now recruiting patients at one site in the United States and we're planning to expand out to more sites. This involves a once-daily administration of L-meritide or placebo. It's one-to-one randomization. It's a 48-week treatment period because we've seen greater benefit with longer therapy in other programs, including our Barth syndrome program. L-meritide, as of now, has been administered to over 1,000 patients across our development program. We have over 100 patient years of experience. We do have patients who've been on the drug for more than four years. So this longer treatment period is something that we have characterized. And again, we're focusing on patients with nuclear DNA mutations, particularly affecting the replosome, but we are enrolling up to an additional 40 patients with other nuclear DNA mutations, so others not listed on the prior list. We're targeting a lot of sites in the United States. So right now, we have one site open in Atlanta, which you can see in green, but we're working to get these other sites up and enrolling patients. And we'll also be using this as a global clinical trial, so there will be sites in Europe and elsewhere around the globe. Those will be posted on clinicaltrials.gov as they start to get up and initiating. Beyond L-meritide, SBT272 is being tested in the clinic in a Phase 1 clinical trial. Again, we're looking at diseases of mitochondrial dysfunction that affect the brain primarily, thinking of diseases like ALS as well as frontotemporal dementia. On the cardiology front, we've seen very intriguing and important data in our Barth syndrome program. We've conducted two clinical trials there, particularly with longer-term therapies. So after nine months to a year, we saw improvements in cardiac function as well as improvements in exercise tolerance and muscle strength, over 100-meter improvement in 6-minute walk test and muscle strength in those trials. We're talking to the FDA about next steps, what additional data is required for us to be able to resubmit an NDA for Barth syndrome. Based on what we've seen in Barth syndrome, we are conducting a Phase 2A clinical trial in Friedrichs ataxia that will begin enrolling patients early this year at the Children's Hospital of Pennsylvania. It's an investigator-sponsored trial looking for patients with Friedrichs who have either visual dysfunction or heart dysfunction. We are working on submitting a new drug, an investigational new drug application so that we can start clinical development in Duchenne muscular dystrophy, which is also a disease of mitochondrial dysfunction. We've had a successful pre-IND meeting with the FDA for this program. And on the ophthalmology front, we are expecting our Phase 2 data in dry AMD, which is actually a disease of aging, more than a genetic mitochondrial disease, but that data will be reading out in the second quarter of this year. And based on formulation decisions we make in our AMD program, we are still planning a Phase 3 clinical trial in Lieber's Hereditary Optic Neuropathy. So our team is about 40 people strong at this point. We're still based in Boston, but mostly connecting with one another by Zoom these days. And our mission remains to essentially bring the lights back on for patients suffering from devastating diseases of mitochondrial dysfunction. So I'm eager to hear the updates from other participants here today and look forward to enjoying the rest of this meeting. Thanks for your time.
Thank you so much, Rini. And I hope that you recognize this with all of our pharmaceutical partners that are on here today. You know, the mitochondrial disease community is so incredibly grateful for your tireless commitment to this community. And I know there've been some bumps on the road, but you guys, excuse me, you continue to come back and we appreciate that. We truly appreciate your unwavering commitment to this community.
Of course. Thanks, Kyra. It's a really important mission. Happy New Year.
Thank you, you too. Thank you so much, Rini. So up next, we have Dr. Matthew Klein, Chief Development Officer with PTC Therapeutics. Welcome, Matt.
Thanks, Kyra. It's a pleasure as always to be here and kick off the year and share our updates on PTC as we continue our longstanding commitment to developing therapies for kids and adults affected by mitochondrial disease. For those of you who don't know PTC, we are a global diversified biopharmaceutical company that was founded almost 25 years ago with a single purpose. And that purpose was to develop therapies for kids and adults affected by rare disease. We've maintained that commitment and over the past two decades, built a robust scientific platform and pipeline that has already several therapies that are being commercialized, including ones for Duchenne muscular dystrophy, a drug for spinal muscular atrophy that we discovered and developed with Roche, known as a Brizd. And of course, one of our key platforms and set of programs is our BioE or Bioenergy platform. And the lead drug from that platform is 743, which many of you have known previously as EPI 743, but is now as part of the PTC family, goes by the name of PTC 743 and also the name of the ticinone. We've been studying 743 in patients with mitochondrial disease for over a decade. In fact, the longest-treated patient, continually-treated patient is now 12 years on therapy and that's a boy with surf 1 disease who started on treatment at age 3. Over the years, we've treated over 500 patients, kids and adults, children as young as one month of age, adults up to the age of 70, with a variety of different mitochondrial disorders and other diseases that are very similar to mitochondrial disease in that they have high levels of oxidative stress and neuroinflammation. We're currently in the process of conducting two registration-directed trials with PTC 743. The first is a Phase 3 trial of Friedrich ataxia, which is fully enrolled at sites around the globe. And the other is for mitochondrial seizures or the symptom of refractory seizures in kids with mitochondrial disease. I know someone put something up about not seeing slides. I don't have any. I think the last presenter did not turn off the sharing mechanism. I don't know if the host could do that. Thank you. So, sorry to delay. So the other indication is what was mitochondrial seizures, which is the symptom of seizures in patients with mitochondrial disease. This is a Phase 2, 3 trial that really incorporates a lot of the learnings we've made over the years in terms of what we've observed in patients treated with 743 who have mitochondrial disease and seizures. And that includes data showing that we were able to reduce the frequency of seizures, also stop and prevent recurrence of the condition of continued seizures, known as status epilepticus, also reducing the number of hospital days patients have with mitochondrial disease. And we've even in certain subgroups been able to show that we have an effect in preventing risk of death. So with all of that data, as well as what we know about the target mechanism of action of 743 and its relationship to mitochondrial disease and seizures, gave us a lot of confidence to move forward with this potential approval trial for patients with mitochondrial disease and seizures. This is a study that's open right now. It's actively enrolling at a number of sites in the United States as well as sites around the globe, including as well as sites around the globe, including Canada, Europe, Japan and Australia. And we're looking to enroll 60 patients. Currently, the inclusion criteria is age 18 and younger, but we're going to actually be expanding that to include any patient 21 years or younger who has symptoms of seizures associated with a genetically confirmed mitochondrial disease. So those are the main inclusion criteria. And basically you'll come into the study if you meet the eligibility criteria and we'll measure the number of seizures you have for one month. And then if you have a certain number of observed seizures, you'll then be randomized to receive 743 or placebo for six months. After that six months, all participants will receive 743 for an additional year. So everyone who participates in the study will get treated with 743. Some will get it right away. Others will get it after a phase of placebo. The key outcome measurement of the study is a reduction in the number of seizures. And importantly, what we've done in light of COVID, and we know that's a major issue for families participating in trials, especially for families affected by Mito. We've significantly reduced the number of visits needed to the hospital or to the doctor. So a lot of this trial is done from home. We give everyone a device like an iPad like device where they can count seizures at home. And we have a lot of other things set up to allow for telemedicine, home visits, again, to really minimize the burden of participation in the trial. And this has been really a help to a lot of the families we've heard who are participating in this study. As I mentioned, the study is actively enrolling again at a number of sites in the US as well as around the world. And if anyone wants more information on the trial, we have a website. Or you can reach out certainly to Mito Action, to Kyra and the team at the Mito Action website. And they can put you in touch with us at PTC and we can give you any information you need on the study, help you figure out what study site is closest to home, what would be most convenient for you to participate. And as I mentioned, we've done a lot of work to try to minimize the burden of participation on patients. We know it's incredibly challenging to travel to the doctors, to travel to study sites in any situation, but certainly more so during the COVID pandemic. So with that, Kyra, I'll conclude my remarks. And again, thank you for this opportunity and look forward to exciting 2022 as we continue our dedication and commitment to delivering treatments to patients.
Thanks, Matt. I appreciate that. And I just wanted to remind everybody, we recently did a webinar with Akira Mito and Matt with PTC therapeutic to talk about the history of this, of this therapy. And Matt, Matt has stuck with it. He has been with it since the beginning. And it's a great webinar on our website that will give you a little bit more detail, talk about who's qualified and answer maybe some additional questions. But as he said, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to us. Thank you so much, Matt. Happy New Year to you. Okay, next up we have Dr. Jan Smiting with Chondrian. Welcome.
Thanks very much, Kyra, and good evening from Netherlands and happy new year to everybody. I'm delighted to be joining you all today with an update on what the team at Chondrian is working on and what we have in store for the next 12 months. And for those who do not know me, my name is Jan Smiting and I've been a professor in mitochondrial medicine for over 25 years and actively involved in patient care, the diagnostic process, counseling, as well as the research of mitochondrial disease patients. For the past decade, I've been the CEO of Chondrian, a company founded with one main goal, to discover and develop much needed new treatments that can help the progression of mitochondrial disease and restore normal cellular function, treatments that will make a substantial impact on and meaningful difference to the lives of patients. Now, as some of you might have heard me say in the past, I decided to form this company in a split second. I knew it would be the surest way to get life changing medicines to patients who so desperately needed them. 10 years on from that decision, the need sadly remains. Perhaps I underestimated the challenge ahead of me. But as you have heard from our speakers already and from the work I see with my own eyes being done by my amazing and hardworking colleagues at Chondrian, today I am more confident than ever that new tailored treatments are on their way. 2022 is set to be a milestone year for Chondrian with the delivery of important data from clinical trials of our lead candidates on the criminal. We have a broad development program underway for this potential medicine, a medicine that we believe could be used to treat multiple mitochondrial diseases and could benefit both adults and children. To explain very briefly, sonde criminol is an oral small molecule that targets the underlying mechanisms of mitochondrial disease. It isn't about controlling or managing symptoms. It's about stopping disease in its tracks. Sonde criminol's unique triple mode of action includes radicul modulation to help restore the cell's metabolism, radical trapping to prevent cell death, and the targeting of a key enzyme to reduce inflammation. It's one of the most clinically advanced disease modifying drug candidates and development for primary mitochondrial diseases. Our team of scientists have devoted themselves to its development for 10 years. And we know, and we know it holds a lot of hope for patients and their families. Later this year, we are expecting results from our phase two B trial investigating sonde criminol in adults with metal spectrum disorders. This trial builds on the promising results seen in earlier trials and is looking specifically at sonde criminol's potential to influence cognitive functioning. Cognitive problems, as you will know, are among the key issues facing those living with mitochondrial disease every day, significantly impacting independence and quality of life. Now, since sonde criminol is expected to be a chronic treatment for patients with mitochondrial diseases, we're also investigating its effects over longer term to gain a better understanding of its potential to improve the clinical outcomes of patients. This extension study, which kicked off in October last year, involves patients who have already completed the phase two B trial. It's a year long trial assessing safety as well as a number of clinical outcome measures, including impact on cognition, fatigue and motor function. I mentioned earlier that our sonde criminol, our sonde criminol program is a broad one. And that's because at Chondrian, we don't want to leave behind anyone living with mitochondrial disease. So alongside our adult trials, we also have a trial ongoing in children with mitochondrial disease who are impacted by motor symptoms, symptoms that affect so much of day to day living for both the children and their families and careers. I know I don't need to tell anyone here today that children living with mitochondrial disease desperately need more than just a supportive care currently available. That's why this pediatric study is especially important to us. Data from all three of these studies will come in during 22. They will be significant because they will guide the final stage of sonde criminol's clinical development. We intend to quickly talk with regulators once we have the data in our hands. So as you can see, this year is an important one for Chondrian and our journey to bring new medicines to patients. We know that it isn't, that isn't a journey we are traveling on alone. And so in closing, I would like to team, I would like to thank the team at Mito Action for bringing us all together today and for all their continuous efforts. I would also like to thank the many patients and clinicians who continue to work with us and support us. Without your contributions to our research and your insights and guidance, none of our work would be possible. I look forward to keeping you all updated on our progress throughout the year. You can learn more about Chondrian by visiting our website, www.chondrian.com. And I'd love to thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, Dr. Smiting. We are grateful for your work that you're doing. And what a huge adventure to start this company. We truly appreciate your commitment to the community and we look forward to continuing to share your work and everything that you're doing and how you're progressing with the community. Thank you so much.
Thanks very much.
So next up we have Dr. Mark Corson with VMP Genetics. Welcome, Dr. Corson.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon and happy new year. I am Director of Physician Support Service and Director of Education at VMP Genetics. Thank you for this opportunity to speak today. As the center of excellence, VMP Genetics has done very well in all three service branches during the past year, despite the pandemic, direct patient care, physician to physician support service and our education service. Our direct care service has been very busy. Since we first pioneered remote consults for genetic rare diseases, we have never closed and even through the pandemic, we continue to support our patients. While we may be very booked up, we have an easy process for patients to be seen much earlier. This can be discussed in greater detail when booking an appointment. Fortunately, genome testing is finding better support and approval by insurance. And we have found that having a qualified expert provide detailed clinical information to the lab scientist makes a difference in the interpretation of those results. Our physician to physician support service has or is currently providing regular expert assistance to eight academic medical centers around the country, assisting clinicians in the diagnosis and management of their acute and chronic disease patients. We hope to expand our clinical support to additional centers in this year. Our education division creates, presents and collaborates and innovative customized educational projects online, in person for students and trainees, clinicians and pharma. During the past year, we developed unique online short courses for professionals who work in metabolic clinics, but who have never trained in this area. So typically have to learn on the job. This teaching is pitched specifically to nurses, to nurses, nurse practitioners, physician assistants, genetic counselors and dieticians. We introduced courses about two disease areas in 2021, about the organic acidemias and homo cystanemia's held at four separate times during the year and all were approved for continuing education credits. Also, we have developed online electives replicating the shadowing experiences that regularly occur in a teaching hospital setting. Patients tell their stories live or by video during these electives. Topics in 2021 included metabolic disorders associated with encephalopathy or brain dysfunction and metabolic disorders associated with stroke. These were also approved for continuing education credits. Given the very positive response to these programs, we are looking for funding to create additional short courses around other disease groups and to hold electives with other themes. VMP Genetics has always promoted the concept of patient teaching, recognizing the power of storytelling as a teaching tool. To this end, we're developing a registry of patient teachers in the US who want to help raise disease awareness by speaking to medical audiences. At present, the registry includes 80 speakers representing 28 different diagnoses. And to date, the registry has provided speakers to over 30 different teaching, 30 different teaching opportunities. In addition, we have discovered on the internet dozens of video clips of patients describing their experiences. And many of these can serve as useful teaching tools to accompany a lecture, but they are scattered and hard to find. So we're collecting information on these videos, bringing their links together in a reference catalog so that educators can find them more easily. So if you would like to participate as a patient teacher to help raise awareness or if you would, if you are aware of a patient video that can serve as an educational resource, let us know. Please check out our website for more information. And finally, we're always looking for collaborators and sponsors to help develop new educational concepts with the goal of raising awareness about metabolic and mitochondrial disease. Want to brainstorm together? Please contact us. Wishing you all good health and happiness in 2022 and an easier year for all of us. Thanks so much for listening.
Thanks, Dr. Corson. We appreciate you. And you know, this is a critical piece to the puzzle, right? Making sure that our clinicians and those that are in medical school that are in training have the ability and the opportunities to learn about mitochondrial disease. So this is really important piece that you've taken on and we truly appreciate all the hard work that you do for this community.
Thank you so much, Kyra.
Thank you, Dr. Corson. Next up, I am excited to welcome back to the Mito Action community and to the Mitro community, Kristi Ball-Sells, who is the Associate Director of Patient Advocacy and Public Policy with Zogenics Pharmaceuticals. Welcome, Kristi.
Thank you. It's so exciting to be back. And I know some of you already from my work in the mitochondrial disease community. But for those of you that I don't know, I'm a mom to a child with Mito, a nurse. And as Kyra just said, the new Associate Director of Patient Advocacy and Public Policy for Zogenics. Zogenics is a company whose goal is to develop transformative therapies for rare genetic diseases with high unmet medical needs. And mitochondrial disease is one of those. We are developing an investigational drug for the ultra rare mitochondrial disease, thymidine kinase two deficiency, also known as TK two deficiency or TK two D. TK two D is a mitochondrial DNA depletion disorder characterized by severe muscle weakness that primarily affects the core, trunk, neck and face. And like other mitochondrial myopathies, it's characterized by muscle weakness. But for TK two D patients, this can progress until patients lose the ability to walk, eat and breathe independently. TK two D can impact people of all ages. Children typically have a more rapidly progressing symptom set while adults, for other adults, symptoms may look like other mitochondrial diseases like PMM. But unlike PMM, TK two D is frequently associated with respiratory weakness, sometimes requiring ventilation like a breathing assistant devices. We fully appreciate the long journey and I certainly do that many of you endure in finding a diagnosis, managing your symptoms and advocating for yourself or for your child. And so I want you all to appreciate that Zogenics is committed to keeping you informed. And I'm excited to work together with Mito Action, UMDF and the entire patient community during the coming year. In 2021, we had the opportunity to learn more about TK two D through a series of projects and studies. And I first and foremost thank each of you that participated in any of these programs that helped shape that knowledge about TK two D. If you have TK two D, we want to hear from you. You can go to www.tk2d.com to learn more about TK two deficiency and join the TK two D email list. And in addition, UMDF hosts a TK two D support group via Zoom and the next meeting is coming up soon on Wednesday, February 9. Working together with the mitochondrial disease experts, some of whom are here today, Zogenics is developing rigorous clinical trials that meet the expectations of agencies that evaluate drug approvals while hopefully also leading to the development and approval of new treatment options for patients with TK two D. And like most Mito diseases, TK two D is really difficult to diagnose and many patients remain undiagnosed without genetic testing. If you suspect that you or your child may have TK two D but do not yet have a genetic diagnosis, please talk to your doctor or the support coordinators at Mito Action and UMDF about ways to get genetic testing. So Genics is proud to sponsor several no cost genetic programs. We also want to acknowledge these groups, Mito Action, UMDF and TK two D cures for their innovation and dedication to bringing the patient voice to FDA. That's the US Food and Drug Administration in an upcoming listening session about TK two D happening later this month. As we enter this year, I'm reminded of how important it is for all of us to work together to advance potential therapies and add to our knowledge of mitochondrial diseases. So you can help advance global knowledge of TK two D in several ways. For those of you that know me, you know that number one is to stay involved. Stay involved and share your voice and be a part of Mito Action and UMDF and other advocacy organizations. But specific for TK two D, you can also participate in the University of Washington TK two D Quality of Life Study. And I'm going to say some email addresses and then I can pop those in the chat as well. If you're interested in that study, it's tk2d@uw.edu. You can also participate in the TK two D support group offered by UMDF that I mentioned before by reaching out to Margaret Moore at UMDF and that's margaret.m o o r e at u m d f.com and joining the TK two D email list, again, that you can find at the TK two D website, tk2d.com. And that is for US patients only, please. If you would like to look at the work that I did with posters from publications on TK two D and others from the team at Zogenics that were presented in 2021 at NORD and the Welcome Trust mitochondrial Medicine meetings, you can find those on zogenics.com under the media tab. Finally, we are Finally, we are really excited to support the first TK two D Awareness Day, which will take place in the month of September, just before Mitochondrial Disease Awareness Week, on Tuesday, September thirteenth. If you would like to participate, please be sure to stay tuned to the news from MitoAction and UMDF for more details. And for any of you that would like to get back in touch or newly in touch with me, I would love to hear from you. My email is cballcells@zogenics.com. That's C-B-A-L-C-E-L-L-S at Z-O-G-E-N-I-X dot com. I'm so honored to continue to partner with each of you in your mitochondrial journey. Thank you, Kyra.
Thank you so much, Kristi. And as I said, welcome back to the community. We're glad to have you here, and we are excited to continue to work with you and Zogenics on the initiatives for TK two D. So thank you so much. Appreciate you. Next up, we have Kristen Voorhees, who is the Director of Patient Advocacy for Ultragenics Pharmaceuticals. Welcome, Kristen.
Hi, Kyra, and good morning, good afternoon, good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year. I apologize, but I don't have video today. I started out the morning with some IT issues. So first and foremost, thank you so much for another invitation to attend today's town hall. We're excited to be able to provide the community with different updates. And before I get started on that, I do want to acknowledge that many different people living with LCFAD have directly shaped the research programs and educational tools I'll be talking about today. So I will recognize those areas when possible. And to start, we've organized these updates into four areas. So the first update is regarding access to DeJolvi in Canada. So following a review of DeJolvi, also known as TRAP2NOIN by CADIS, which is the Canadian Agency for Drugs and Technologies in Health, the Canadian Drug Expert Committee, another acronym, CDAC, they reversed their initial negative funding decision for DeJolvi, and they're now recommending that DeJolvi be reimbursed with conditions by provincial and territorial governments in Canada outside of Quebec. Following this reconsideration process, CADIS issued on Thursday, December sixteenth, so just a couple weeks ago, a revised draft of the CDAC recommendation for reimbursement with conditions for DeJolvi for the treatment of patients with LCFAD long-chain fatty acid oxidation disorders who meet the recommended eligibility criteria. It's important to say that this decision represents an important first step towards public access for Canadian patients living with an LCFAD, and we will be working with each province in Canada as they decide whether to follow the recommendations from CADIS. We would like to acknowledge and thank the contributions, the invaluable contributions of both MitoAction and the patient community in achieving this important milestone. And you can learn more by visiting the CADIS website and entering TRAP2NOIN as a search term. The second update and a news announcement is the progress and status of our LCFAD research programs, which right now include three different studies. So the first update is about the LCFAD Odyssey Study, which is centralizing medical records for patients and creating an anonymized dataset for researchers to better understand the set of conditions and measure the healthcare utilization. The community feedback informed both the study design and the data collection, as well as the PRO assessment included in the study. And the study has been open to adults and children living in the U.S. with any type of LCFAD who are on any treatment for about a year and a half. And as of December sixth of last year, we have thirty-nine different people enrolled. And as part of this year and a half journey and moving forward, we really believe it's important that the community and the participants have access to the results. So we first provided a look at the data. Sorry for the background noise. We first provided a look at the data on MitoAction's webinar last May, and then another update at the International Metabolic Conference in July. And you can check out the recordings of those presentations on the website, on MitoAction's website. Then, in October, our Global Healthcare Economics and Outcomes Research Team presented additional preliminary data based on a sample of thirteen patients. And we're currently expecting more publications from the first data cut of twenty-seven participants in the first half of this year. And we'll be sharing plain language summaries and other publications with the participants and the broader community as the program advances. You can check out technichealth.com/LCFAD to learn more. The second set of studies are for our DMP or Disease Monitoring Program, and this includes both an in-clinic study with sites in multiple countries, as well as an online platform. And the DMP is really a unique concept developed by our CEO, and it's a long-term prospective outcome study that aims to collect information for up to ten years from both adults and pediatrics. So participants can be on any treatment. They do not need to be on DeJolvi in order to participate. And we're excited to say that the in-clinic site, or the in-clinic study, rather, enrolled its first patient on November thirtieth. So we have more sites up and coming, and the online DMP, which is the second DMP study, is expected to open in the second half of this year in 2022. So you can learn more at clinicaltrials.gov, and we also suggest that you stay in touch with your medical team to learn more. The third update is an announcement that we have two new opportunities for people living in both the U.S. and Canada to share their experiences with us. So first, we are creating a new committee of individuals living with CPP2 and VLCAD who live in either the U.S. and Canada and whose diagnosis did not involve newborn screening. And that's important because the community has shared insights and feedback that their diagnosis, who predates the implementation of newborn screening or whose diagnosis was not initiated via a successful newborn screen test, have a very different journey. And so we're really committed to hearing about that and understanding ways we can provide support, education, and drive diagnosis. So please reach out to myself. I'll put in my email or Kyra for more information on to participate. And then this second opportunity is we are hosting another insights meeting with people who live in Canada to specifically learn about how information is shared in the community and what opportunities there may be for us to support the connections and engagement in the Canadian community. So again, you can contact myself or Kyra if you'd like to learn more. And then the fourth announcement is regarding new disease educational tools and programs. Last year, we completed a year-long project focused on developing three resources to support patients and families as they navigate life with LCFAD. And the resources are divided into birth throughout childhood adolescence and then into adulthood. And you can go to FAOD in Focus for a download or print copy. And we're very grateful to members of the community and the healthcare providers who provided input on these. And then finally, we also added new features to FAOD in Focus based on feedback from the community. This now includes a metabolic clinic finder, new resources that are translated into Spanish. We have new information on the types of LCFAD, and people now have the ability to request a printed copy of the resource toolkit. We'll be sharing new information with the Canadian community based on adapting materials over the last year. That will soon be available on the website as well. And in the meantime, you can stay in touch with us at ultrarareadvocacy.com, or I will drop a couple different emails in the chat. And again, thank you so much, and I wish everybody a happy New Year. I look forward to more working with you. Thanks, Kyra.
Thanks, Kristen. I appreciate your time this morning. And really exciting news about the approval in Canada. That's really great news to share with the community, and we're excited about that. We will continue to update and provide information about all the initiatives that Ultragenics is working on on our website, and we can connect you with Kristen if you are interested in learning more. So next up, we have Dr. Jerry Bachley, who is the Chief of Medical Genetics at UPMC. Welcome, Dr. Bachley.
Hello, thanks. And let me grab my quick slide here. That should work. Well, thanks. Thanks to MitoAction for putting this together. When I looked at the agenda, it struck me as being speed dating for metabolism. So it's really a terrific effort. And I have to tell you, I'm at home. For those of you who don't know, this is Orthodox Christmas, and half my family is Orthodox, so I get to celebrate two Christmases. So I'm going to be logging off right after I finish this. And then it's really gratifying to see all the names and faces up there, colleagues and friends. I'm glad everyone's been willing to participate in this. So as Kyra said, I'm the chief of, actually, we've changed our division name, Kyra. We're now the Division of Genetic and Genomic Medicine. And that makes a big difference from my standpoint because it really brings therapy back into our discipline, as far as I'm concerned. And for the few minutes that we have today, I'm just going to run through really quickly the resources that we bring to the MITO community. And oops, that showed up. Oh, yeah, there we go. And lots of time to talk about this in other fora. So I purposely titled my talk Mitochondrial Energy Metabolism and not Respiratory Chain Deficiencies because there are three energy cycles in the, or pathways in mitochondria, the respiratory chain, fatty acid oxidation disorders, and the TCA cycle. And so we have a specific focus on all three, but I'm going to talk for the next couple of minutes about what we're doing for respiratory chain deficiencies and fatty acid oxidation disorders. We are part of the, excuse me, the newly, well, a couple of years now, founded mitochondrial medicine society, mitochondrial care center. And Dr. Uda Lichter is our director of that clinic. She has a terrific genetic counselor serving as coordinator of that clinic. And we have a number of shared resources across, excuse me, across the division, including three metabolic nurses, soon to be three metabolic dieticians. We've established contacts across all of the subspecialties that we need to take care of our patients with respiratory chain deficiencies. And we evaluate and treat both children, which is in patients. That's meant to say adults. And so even though we're based in a children's hospital, we do have a footprint in the adult world. And I know important in this day and age, we do have telemedicine options available when they're appropriate. We don't typically use those for first-time evaluations, but we can do a good bit of follow-up by telemedicine. Fatty acid oxidation disorders, and you heard from Kristen Voorhees just before this, are really, I think, an important part of the mission of mitochondrial energy metabolism-oriented folks. And I'm extraordinarily grateful that MitoAction has adopted them as part of their mission. We coordinate in Pittsburgh, the International Fatty Acid Oxidation Consortium called INFORM, and we're also part of a national organization of rare diseases effort called the Rare Disease Centers of Excellence. I pretty much focus or handle all of the work with fatty acid oxidation disorders with many of the same resources that we use for the respiratory chain disorders. And we also will evaluate and treat children and adults and have telemedicine available. One of the most important aspects of what we do at Children's is we have a very, very large footprint in research in these disorders. We participate and/or have started our own clinical trials for both sets of disorders. And we have a lot of work going on in the basic sciences, as well as preclinical laboratory work. In addition, most of us are heavily involved in advocacy work. I work with MitoAction, the UMDF, and many, there are some smaller groups that are part of the fatty acid oxidation and organic acidemia world, as well as phenylketonuria. And so very much enjoy the opportunity to talk and discuss disorders of interest and advances in family fora. And with that, I'll just add a little commercial here. If you want more information on any of these efforts or you would like to call for an appointment in our clinic, the number's up there, 412-692-5070. Kyra, if you want to type that into the chat, that would be great. You can do that. And I'll say thank you. And they're a lovely hospital. If you ever come to visit us, you can see it. And I think I can just get out of there now and come back on camera. So thanks very much for the time.
Thank you, Dr. Bachley. We appreciate it. And MitoAction is honored to support the FAOD community, and it's been a pleasure to work with you to support that incredible community. So thank you so much for being here with us today.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Ted Tufus with Dino Health. Ted, are you here?
Hi, Kyra. Thank you very much for having us on. So just a little bit about what's going on with the compounding world and the mito cocktail, et cetera. Not much really has changed since last year. There were a few situations with supply chain or other medication delays because of COVID for obvious reasons. So there were some delays in those situations for compounding. The other thing was livalcarantine from a whole bunch of sources ended up not being an FDA-approved source. So that ended up becoming an issue for some MITO patients as well for quite some time past year. Although with the new release that allows the patient's primary current deficiency to not treat the livalcarantine because the risks are greater than the rewards. So that eventually, it was a month or two of each other, whatever. So it was a huge drop-off in livalcarantine usage anyways. I don't know how much it affected everybody in an overall scale, but a lot of patients that we've had on the livalcarantine also ended up having a drop-off in medication because of the new regulations that came out. Also, the other study that was published, I believe, in the late 2020 or early 2021, we have a discussion with MitoAction, like a Q and A session. There was released an article where there was a more general consensus about what to prescribe and what to start off people with mito disease from the mito cocktail. It mostly focused on like CoQ temperolic acid, the primary antioxidants, versus looking at the whole gamut of like all the B vitamins, all of the vitamin C, et cetera. It was based on patients' metabolic profiles and patient response as well. A lot of evidence presented by clinicians across the country and the world as well that was put together, a collaboration consensus statement that was released. So it kind of streamlined the starting point for a lot of patients. And they have a more focused approach of starting with the mito cocktail. We addressed some of that in the webinar that we did with MitoAction. Insurances are turning more and more into like a lack of coverage for the mito cocktail, which unsurprisingly, because that was the trend that was going down anyways. Twenty twenty-one is only a few days in, so, or twenty twenty-two is only a few days in. We're obviously seeing some more issues. But twenty twenty-one saw a downward trend of insurance coverages for the mito cocktail, at least in the Northeast region where we're located. I'm not sure how the rest of the country is seeing with insurance coverage. But other than that, there really hasn't been much of a change because twenty twenty saw a few, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one saw a huge stagnation of a lot of things. A lot of the regulations and stuff that was being tried to be passed by FDA and USP got delayed multiple times. There are another delaying action that may end up moving forward come January or start June of this year regarding compounding. So that may or may not affect compounds. It just depends on whether it gets later, gets put into place. And there's the period of time between the regs being implemented to the point where they have to be followed, which is another six-month gap. So it probably won't be until 2023 when the effects of any of those changes may be felt, just depending on how things progress. But other than that, yeah, there hasn't been too much of a change in the mito cocktail and the compounding realm, at least in the Northeast and South.
Thank you, Alex, for the, or Ted, I'm sorry. Thank you for that. I'm already looking to the next person. Thank you for that update. And we'll look forward to, as any regulations change or rules are changing or guidelines, we'll look forward to hosting another MITO Expert Series and bringing you back to give us a full update on any changes. and bringing you back to give us a full update on any changes that we need to make sure the community is aware of. So thank you for your time. I know you've got a really busy day going today.
I apologize for the quick on and off, but thank you for having me. And I'm glad we can work with you guys to help out our patients.
Thank you so much. Have a great day. Thanks so much. Now, up next, we have Dr. Dornbaum, who is the Chief Medical Officer for Reneo Pharmaceuticals. Welcome, Dr. Dornbaum.
Thank you very much. Can you all hear me well?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. So as we discussed before, Reneo is developing REN001 for the treatment of PMM. And REN001 activates a receptor called PPAR delta. And PPAR delta is present in many tissues, including the muscle, where it helps control the mitochondrial function and the formation of new mitochondria. So we completed a phase one study in patients with primary mitochondrial myopathy. And REN001 was safe and well tolerated in that study. We saw improvements in the 12-minute walk test and the sit-to-stand test. We also saw improvements in peak oxygen consumption, which is, in a way, a measure of oxidative phosphorylation that happens in the mitochondria. And the patients who took the medicine also reported less pain and less fatigue during this study. So patients in this study had the opportunity to continue in a long-term study. And the majority of the patients chose to continue treatment in this extension. And the longest duration of treatment in that study was about 40 weeks. What is important about all of this is that the data from these studies supported the design of an ongoing new study, the STRIPE study. And that's the study I want to talk about now. In the STRIPE study, this is a double-blind placebo-controlled trial, and it's currently enrolling patients. The fact that it's a double-blind placebo-controlled trial means that patients have an equal chance of receiving either REN001 or a dummy medicine, a placebo, for a total of 24 weeks. The patients and the doctors won't know which treatment they are receiving. And the study will enroll about 200 patients with PMM. And this is a study limited to patients who have mitochondrial gene defects. Now, the primary test in the study is the 12-minute walk test. So the patients that take part in the study must be able to independently walk. They can use a cane if they need to, but they must be able to walk independently. And the study is being done in more than 30 centers in the US, in Canada, in Europe, Australia, and in New Zealand as well. Now, we're very excited because despite the pandemic and the Omicron virus, the study sites in all 30 participating countries are open to enrollment. And Reneo is aware that patients with PMM have several opportunities to take part in studies. And the STRIPE study was designed to be really very user-friendly. The study offers transportation support to the sites. And when possible, we do home visits. Now, if you're interested about this study, you can get more information in two websites. First, you can visit the STRIPE study website. This site is pretty useful because it includes a questionnaire that will help you decide if the study is a good match for you. The site is pmmstudy.com. PMM study is one word, dot com. You can also go to clinicaltrials.gov. And many of you probably already know this website. Again, clinicaltrials is one word, and then you put .gov, G O V. And there you can search for REN001, REN, R E N, 001. And that will take you to a link that has a good description of the study. Of course, you can also discuss the study with your doctor. Most of the treating doctors who are taking care of patients with PMM will be aware of our study as well. Now, in addition to these studies, Reneo is also doing two other programs with patients with PMM. We have an open-label long-term extension study called the STRIPE Ahead Study for patients who took part in the previous phase one study that I described, and also for the patients who are participating in the STRIPE study. And in this study, patients can continue treatment with REN001 for up to two years. This study is currently approved in many countries, but it's not open for enrollment in the United States yet. And last, we also have an exit interview study for patients who complete the STRIPE study. And this is very important because this study is being done in the US and in Canada. And it is a one-time phone or Zoom-based interview following the completion of the STRIPE study. And the goal here is to learn about the changes in health that the patients who took part in the STRIPE study have noticed. And this will give us a more personalized view of how the patients feel that the drug may or may not be helping them. So I want to thank you for your attention and the organizers for allowing us to share with you a progress on the programs. And we look forward to continuing to offer you updates about the Reneo program. Thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Dornbaum. I've dropped into the chat the links that you just provided so that anyone interested can get more information.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Happy New Year to you. Thank you for taking time out for us today.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Next, I'd like to introduce to you Lori Martin, who is the president and founding member of People Against Lee Syndrome. Lori?
Hi, thank you so much, Kyra, for having today. And everyone on the call, it's been so exciting to hear everyone's great progress. Even though COVID, of course, was a problem for us, we actually hosted our most successful fundraiser yet in May of 2021. And all of our funds are being used to support efforts related to Lee syndrome research for treatments and ultimately, one day, a cure. We support the UT Mitochondrial Center of Excellence and the Trials Patient Registry for Lee Syndrome. And we would encourage all, I think, 2022, as you'll begin to hear, is probably going to be the year of the registry, if you will, in the mitochondrial disease community. And I would just encourage everyone to join everything. You know, we talk a lot about registry fatigue or data fatigue and how that might affect our patient community. But really, at the end of the day, it's kind of like signing up for free stuff. Just sign up and do it. And one day, it will all, it will all connect. Hopefully, one day, very soon. We are also, PALS is also part of the International Lee Syndrome Consortium Group. And I'm pretty sure that Brian with the UMDF will be talking a little bit more about what the Lee Syndrome Project, what's happening there, so I won't steal his thunder, since he's one of the last one. But we are also excited to announce we are funding two research grants, a project out of Germany and a project out of the United States. Each project will be awarded $25,000 grant. And those are going to be announced in the coming weeks. So please, please find us on Facebook, Instagram, or our website, which is peopleagainstlees.org, and join the registry. I think that is all I have. And I just wanted to say a special thanks as a parent of a almost 13-year-old boy with Lee Syndrome. This is just an amazing community to be part of as a parent and a volunteer. And I wish that I didn't know every, each of you. But along the way, I'm happy that this is the group of people that we're working with because you can see the passion and enthusiasm. So thank you so much and see you in the new year.
Thank you so much, Lori. And I appreciate your comment about join everything, right? Because there's so many different initiatives that are going on, and they all have incredible value. And so, again, you know, the goal is, at the end of the day, that all this data gets pulled together in one place, which is what we're all working towards collaboratively as patient advocacy groups. So we appreciate you and all that you do, and we thank you for being here with us today. Thank you so much. Next, we have Dr. Richard Bowles with mitochondrial and molecular medicine. Welcome, Dr. Bowles.
Welcome. Do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Can you see me? All right.
We can see you, yes.
Okay, it just shows this blank on here. All right. Well, first of all, I want to talk about what my focus is because mitochondrial dysfunction, whether it's primary to mitochondrial disease or secondary to something else, can cause a wide variety of different things. We all know that. I'm involved in clinical care of patients, analysis of DNA sequencing for my own patients and patients of other doctors. And as part of a company, provide comprehensive products for dietary supplementation for mitochondrial dysfunction. Now, we know that clinical phenotypes are diverse. And I focus on, number one, neurodevelopmental disorders such as autism, ADHD, and all the others. And then also the functional disorders such as pain, fatigue, nausea, vomiting. In particular, in the functional disorders, I'm involved in cyclic vomiting syndrome, which is episodes of nausea and vomiting, often with other symptoms that are surrounded by having periods of normal health that can last days, weeks, or even months. And also, a lot of the disorders like cyclic vomiting are paradoxical. Or they're transient, they're cyclic, they occur, you know, from time to time. And often, because they come and they go, and no one can figure out, and standard laboratory tests are normal. People say, oh, it's psychiatric, they're crazy, it's somatiform conversion disorder back down to Freud. Or they say it's an abusive situation, like in a munchhouse and by proxy, or a medical child abuse. So again, that I see, I see patients with a wide variety of mitochondrial dysfunction, but I'm mostly focused on the neurodevelopmental and the functional disorders, particularly the ones that come and go. In terms of the clinical, I do whole genome sequencing. That's all 3 billion nucleotides in essentially all of my patients. For the, I do it at Variantics, which is a lab in the Boston area that I don't have a conflict of interest with, but I think they do an excellent job. And they let me in the back into the computer, meaning that I can do the analysis myself. That's what I recommend them. Most of my work is through Neurobilities these days. Let me see if I can get this slide going. Is that working?
No, we don't. We see you still.
Okay, let me take off of this here. Come on. Okay. Sorry.
No worries. Take your time. There you go.
Okay. And for some reason, my computer thinks that this is supposed to be in Polish. So I took this slide from a presentation in Poland, and so it was saying everything is misspelled. Does it show up right now?
Yes, we can see.
Okay, great. So here's some of the focus here. Neurobilities is a large office that does everything in terms of neurological and neurodevelopmental disease in the Philadelphia area, on both the New Jersey and the Philadelphia, and on the Pennsylvania side. They have hundreds of different people there, about 10 different practitioners. I do the genomics there, the genetics. This is their website and an email of the coordinator for the neurogenomics, and then some of the other social media connections. They can see patients directly for all sorts of neurological diseases, including mitochondrial disease, autism, you know, and cyclic vomiting, which is the type of migraine. And they can refer to me to do the genomics or that you can just see me just for the genomics and have other doctors in other locations. The other thing, by the way, is that about 50% or so of the patients that we see, particularly with neurodevelopmental disorders, have de novo mutations. That's a mutation that's not present in either parent and is only present in the child, who may be at any age. And so we're getting much higher in terms of diagnostic outcome than most people are used to and what's in the literature. When you do whole genome sequencing, you do trios, both parents and the child. It's about 50% in neurodevelopmental that we're finding a causative mutation. And in many of the other 50%, we're finding risk factors for neurodevelopmental disorders. Now, some of these are inherited disorders that are treatable or de novo disorders that are treatable, and some of them are not treatable. And about 50% of them have significant improvement based upon treatments that were suggested by the DNA that weren't done or thought about before. So we're having pretty good outcomes, some benefit, some don't. It's about a coin flip if you do the whole genome, whether you're going to get any additional information that translates to a useful therapy that actually helps the child. The other thing is, in the functional disorders, is that they're usually not, there's rare exceptions, but they're usually not de novo. They're inherited variants from both parents. And the outcomes are even much higher than that. A lot of them are channelopathies. And the channelopathies are treated with specific drug, a different drug for each channelopathy, as well as many supplements. And the channelopathies have, every single channelopathy patient that I've seen has secondary mitochondrial dysfunction. So that they really do have a mitochondrial disease. And the primary issue is the channelopathy, so it would be a secondary mitochondrial dysfunction. We also find secondary mitochondrial dysfunction in a lot of the disorders such as axon transport, neurotransmitters, and many other things. The other thing that I'm involved with is Neuroneeds, which is a company that was set up a few years ago that some of you might know about, Conflict of Interest. I'm one of the free partners, and I'm the scientific and medical director. Here's how you reach that. We have two flag products, Spectre Needs and Energy Needs, which have multiple components to it that are useful for mitochondrial dysfunction. Spectre Needs is in a powder designed for children. Energy Needs is in a capsule designed for adults. But we have people that take either, some adults like powder, some kids like can take capsules. There are 33 or 40 different active ingredients in it. So it's pretty much the entire mitochondrial cocktail in one product, which makes it a lot easier, a lot cheaper, and a lot less side effects in taking all the individual products with all the individual fillers and everything. There's not enough ubiquinone, which is a type of CoQ, in any of the products because it's an oil. And then Q needs is a very, it's a ubiquinol highly bioavailable form of CoQ that comes in lemaline oil, not soy oil. And so it is, and it's, there are others on the market, but this is a much lower price than most of them on the market. The other thing is that fish oil is not something that's usually spoken about, but omega-3 fatty acids are very important in brain development. And they have important parts in mitochondrial dysfunction and in mitochondrial function. And you can either take fish oil, which has high, which has very high amounts of omega-3s, but doesn't get into brain very well because it's triglyceride instead of phospholipid bound, and the phospholipids what's got into brain. Or you can take krill, which is much more expensive, doses are much less. It gets into brain, but the dosing's much less. And then we're, Neuroneeds is coming up with a product called Omega Needs. It should be out in the fall, I'm sorry, in the spring of this year, which will have both of those together, plus phosphatidylserine, which is important in mitochondrial function and in brain development. So that's what I got.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bowles. I appreciate it. And we will also, we'll drop in the chat a link to your website if anybody is interested in getting more information. So we appreciate you and all that you do for this community. Thank you for joining us today, Dr. Bowles.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Up next, we have Casey Wolben, who is the founder of CureMito. Welcome, Casey.
Hi, Kyra. Happy New Year. I'm so excited to be here on this town hall meeting and share what CureMito has been up to. Let me see if I can share my screen. Sorry for the delay.
We can see your screen, Casey.
I know. I'm trying to get it. Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, sorry for the little delay. As you all know, CureMito and MITO Action are collaborating with All Stripes to collect medical records for Lee syndrome patients. Right now, we have a total of 58 patients enrolled. And I just would like to say that All Stripes is amazing. As a parent myself of a child with Lee syndrome, having all your records, medical records, in one place is super important. I'm now no longer carrying around a thick binder to appointments. I can easily share medical records with my son's medical team. So I encourage you all, if you're in Canada, the UK, the United States, to please sign up for All Stripes Medical Records Collection. And it's all de-identified. Any researcher who is working on Lee syndrome research can access this information, de-identified information, and hopefully push drug development faster. Secondly, we are working with Sanford Research, Coordination of Rare Diseases at Sanford, which is CORDS. It is a worldwide patient Lee syndrome registry. And we just started at the end of September, and we now have over 134 patients enrolled. And something that is really, that I really want to bring to light with this registry is, it's a very transparent registry. We've been sharing insights with our patient community since opening in it's a very transparent registry. We've been sharing insights with our patient community since opening in the end of September. We follow best practices regarding data privacy, survey design, data analysis. We are also going to be presenting a poster in February at a conference to Mido experts, and we will be sharing that information with the Mido community shortly thereafter. So we're super excited about that. We're collecting the data right now, and it looks great. And it's just one thing that we, that we believe is, in sharing and this data with researchers and pharmaceutical companies to ultimately accelerate drug development. We are also working with CPATH, which is an FDA-funded platform, data-sharing platform. And we hope to harmonize all of our data that we are collecting now, harmonize that through CPATH, and have a one big data silo for Lee syndrome. Next, we are working with Coriel Institute, that is our biorepository. We have collected over thirty-six skin biopsies in over nine countries. We, now this, I should say, is led by the NIH, so it is free of charge. Sorry. And it's, oh, no. Oh, no, sorry. Okay, sorry. Free of charge, nine countries are enrolled. We are expanding into blood samples. So if you are a Lee syndrome patient, we would love to collect blood samples to have those in our biorepository. So those will be available to all researchers worldwide. Whoever's working on a particular mutation, they will have access to that. Next, we've been working with Tasha and UT Southwestern for Lee syndrome, our SURF1 Lee syndrome AAV9 gene therapy. And I'm happy to say that we have an investigational new drug application, IND, enabled for 2022. So super exciting. Please stay in touch with us and Tasha as we share updates in the next quarter. We will, Tasha is sponsoring SURF1 Natural History Study, and that will also, information on that will be available in quarter one, two. Also, ATP6 Lee syndrome, we are sponsoring a gene therapy out at UT Southwestern as well. So more information can be found on our website regarding that. We are also partnered with RareBase. RareBase is a PBC, and they are, it's a platform that is using tissues, blood samples, to find drug repurposing. So if there is a drug out on the market that could potentially help our children, they're going to find it, identify it, and hopefully we can start a study on that. So I'd also like to mention, we do have patient resources on our website. We have a newly diagnosed page, family blog, kids page, support, books. We encourage collaboration. So if you have any advice or content that you'd like to see on our website, please get in touch with us. We love, we love ideas. And like I said, we are parents on a mission to accelerate drug development for Lee syndrome. And we're just excited to see what 2022 will bring. And more information, just please contact us.
Thank you so much, Casey. Your energy truly invigorates us. And Mido Action is so excited to continue to expand how we're, our two organizations are working together. Thank you so much.
Sorry for the technical difficulties. Thank you.
It's all good. Thank you so much. So next up, we have Dr. Amel Kara, who's the president of the Mitochondrial Medicine Society. Welcome, Dr. Kara.
Thank you, Kyra, and thank you to Mido Action for organizing this wonderful town hall meeting today. I will tell you a little bit about the Mitochondrial Medicine Society. For those of you who don't know what this is, it is a physician association founded in nineteen ninety-eight by Dr. Richard Harst and Dr. Bob Navio. And it represents an international group of physicians, researchers, and clinicians working towards advancing education, research, and global collaborations in the clinical mitochondrial medicine. I am the current president of the MMS, and we will be electing a new president this coming June. So in our mission to further education, we develop publications, scientific publication for primary mitochondrial disease specifically. We have publications that are freely available on our website. We have system-based publications and educational material for those subspecialists who don't necessarily care for a lot of mitochondrial disease patients, but who may have one or two patients to specifically educate them on the system and the organs that they specialize in. We, all of these publications are developed by expert mitochondrial specialists, and they are freely available on our website at www.midosoc.org. They are all here. We also provide statement for current issue, like we have a COVID-19 statement. And if there is a public health problem, vaccination reports, we publish that freely on our website. We have also partnered in the last two years with the United Mitochondrial Disease Foundation to create the Mitro University. This is a resource that is both available for patients, families, and caregivers that has lay information about mitochondrial diseases. But the interesting thing is that we have also developed CME material for physicians who would like to know more about mitochondrial disease. And after they review the material, they can claim credit for their education, which is required by all state licensures. We have been working diligently to provide an accredited mitochondrial medicine certification and/or fellowship. It requires a lot of work and a lot of approvals, but we are working on this, and we hope to make this a reality soon. We also provide a lot of education in national and international conferences. We try to spread the word as much as possible about mitochondrial disease to raise awareness. These are some of the conferences that I have participated in, in South America, Brazil, Colombia, in the US, Canada, as well as in Europe. The second part of our mission is to try to improve clinical care. And in 2018, we have developed a network, the Mitochondrial Care Network. This is, this is our website. It's a www.mitronetwork.org. We have twenty-two mitochondrial clinical experts site. Dr. Vokli earlier mentioned that his site is an accredited MCN site. These are staffed by mitochondrial directors that are expert in mitochondrial disease, and we oversee their education, and we follow them on a regular basis to make sure that they can maintain their certification. We have, we continue to try to add more sites to our network and be on the lookout for a statement from us pretty soon this month. We also support, we provide support for the UMDF and Mido Action, bringing answers to providers from across the country and internationally when they have questions specifically for one of their patients or require some help with a complicated case. They do submit questions to us, and those are handled by the MMS members and the MMS board. We have also launched for our research and collaboration into a specific MMS journal, the Mitochondrial and Metabolic Medicine Journal, which is also available on this website. This is a scientific journal to publish specific cases and research about my primary mitochondrial disease. We continue to work with our partners in Canada and their mitochondrial collective to engage better in research and drug development, as well as, most recently, with the International Mitochondrial Patient Association, with the initial Amsterdam meeting in 2021, discussing pain in primary mitochondrial disease. How do we recognize it? How can we manage it and treat it? And this is ongoing work. We have an annual session at the United Mitochondrial Disease Annual Symposium. This is our agenda from last year, and we are working on our new agenda for 2022, which will be in June in Arizona. This is an opportunity to attract physicians and healthcare providers to learn more about mitochondrial disease. And we address current issues and current learnings about mitochondrial medicine. We continue to update our diagnostic and care guidelines. These are the freely available resources to inform doctors on how to recognize mitochondrial disease, how to diagnose them, and how to treat them and manage them. We also try to, continue to try to improve the delivery of clinical care through the Mitochondrial Care Network by providing a multidisciplinary approach to patient care and providing all sub specialties needed for our patients that are diagnosed with a primary mitochondrial disease. We continue to support drug development for primary care, for primary mitochondrial diseases by selecting sites and conducting clinical trials at our sites. If you have a provider who's interested in knowing more about mitochondrial diseases, please direct them to our website. They can become a member. We have members from all over the world, and we continue to extend our membership. This is a great resources for them to know more about how to treat you and how, and get access to the most up-to-date information. You can contact us by going on our website on either MCN or the Mitochondrial Medicine Society website, and thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Kara, for being here with us and sharing all of this information. And we'll look forward to that announcement next month and sharing more information with the community about all the great work that the MCN and the MMS is doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Elizabeth Reynolds, who is the co-founder of the CHAMP Foundation. Elizabeth, welcome.
Hi, thank you so much for having us and organizing this meeting and providing us an opportunity to present on Pearson syndrome and single large-scale MTDNA deletion syndromes. My name is Elizabeth Reynolds. My husband Jeff and I are co-founders of the CHAMP Foundation. The mission of the CHAMP Foundation is simple and focused. We support research toward better treatment and a cure for single large-scale mitochondrial DNA deletion disorders like Pearson syndrome. Our son William was born in June of 2015. He was diagnosed with Pearson syndrome in September, and we started the CHAMP Foundation in November, because after William was diagnosed, we realized there was no cure, no treatment, no clinical trials, and no research. Since starting the CHAMP Foundation, we have funded over $1 million for nine different research projects. We funded projects focused on gene editing, drug repurposing, studies for preclinical data for clinical trials. Our most recent project is focused on developing an MTDNA deletion mouse model at the University of Cambridge. In our efforts to continue supporting research, we've recently teamed up with two other organizations and established the SLS-MDS Family Partnership. Our goal is to fund a larger, higher-risk, higher-reward project. We're expecting the final applications from the most promising projects at the end of the month. In addition to funding the most, some of the most exciting science and research relating, related to MTDNA deletions, the CHAMP Foundation was awarded a Chan Zuckerberg Initiative Grant in early 2020. The grant was a $450,000 grant to establish an SLS-MDS research network. We've used this transformative grant to further our understanding of our very rare disorders with this very explicit goal to support clinical trials and translational research. With this grant, we've created the CHAMP Foundation Registry, or the CFR. The CFR is envisioned as a new type of registry linking patient-reported outcomes, physician-reported outcomes from a natural history study, biospecimen data from our repository, and also electronic health record data. To date, we've had nearly 100 individuals register with Pearson syndrome, Curuncera syndrome, and CPEO, making this the best available dataset of individuals and children with MTDNA deletions. We are grateful for the families who have completed the ten-plus surveys on the CFR. These surveys range from body-specific questionnaires to standardized and validated measures to repeated measures using longitude, to understand the longitudinal outcomes of individuals with deletions. Our first paper using CFR data was recently published in Molecular Genetics and Metabolism. We reported on the high-level patient-reported outcomes of pediatric MTDNA deletions. And some novel findings include higher-than-expected incidence of psychiatric problems and also hematological malignancies. We also reported a longer life expectancy than previous studies. I'm happy to share this paper with anyone who's interested. And we are already planning additional research projects using these patient-reported outcomes from the CFR. And as I mentioned, the CFR links both these patient-reported outcomes to physician-reported outcomes from the CHAMP Foundation-sponsored Natural History Study. The Pearson syndrome Natural History Study is taking place at two Centers of Excellence, the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia and the Cleveland Clinic. Children receive the highest quality and standardized care from the physicians who know the most about Pearson syndrome, and the CHAMP Foundation will support families to travel to participate in the study. The study is currently ongoing. In addition to supporting research and creating the CHAMP Foundation Registry, we are also planning our third international conference this summer. The conference will be in Philadelphia and will bring researchers, industry, and importantly, families together to discuss the current state of Pearson syndrome and deletion research, and how we can quickly move the needle toward a cure. For families joining today, please let us know how we can help you. We have a newly diagnosed guidelines, the CHAMP Foundation Registry, access to the most experienced clinical doctors, and travel support to participate in the Natural History Study. We would also love to have you attend our conference this summer. For industry and researchers, tell us if you'd like access to our registry or biospecimen data, would like to participate in our conference, or if you need funding for a project that can bring us closer to a cure. The CHAMP Foundation moves fast, and we're very focused on a specific problem. Our patient population does not have time for us to waste, and we are looking forward to 2022 and future collaborations.
Thank you so much, Elizabeth. This, I believe, is the first time that the CHAMP Foundation has participated in our annual town hall meeting. So we are really excited to have you. We look forward to working with you throughout 2022, supporting your efforts and sharing all that you're doing with the community. Thank you so much for being here. Take care. Next up, we have co-founders of CureRS, Desiree Maggi and Ashley Rowland. Welcome, ladies.
Hello. First, we'd like to thank you, Kyra and Mido Action, for giving us the opportunity to introduce ourselves. Sorry, I'm not on camera today. My name is Desiree McGee. My daughter is Daphne. She is six years old, and she has leukoencephalopathy with thalamic and brainstem involvement with pyelactate. It's also called combined oxidative phosphorylation deficiency 12. This is from a mutated Ears 2 gene.
And I am Ashley Rowland. My daughter Aubrey is three years old and has LKMP or leukoencephalopathy with ovarian failure from the ARS2 gene. We formed our nonprofit CureRS to fund disease research for the nineteen MITO ARS genes that all affect the central nervous system. We will fund research for a therapeutic treatment with the ultimate goal of a cure. Based on conversations with doctors and researchers, these genes can be studied together, and in doing so, will accelerate the path to a cure. We've been working to join together the patients through social media, doctor referrals, a letter sent to newly diagnosed by GeneDx and other platforms. We encourage anyone who has an ARS patient to refer them to us, so we can help provide them support or connect them with others who have, who are affected by the same gene. We are connecting patients to the researchers with a patient registry through CORDS at Sanford Health, which is launching soon. We are also exploring ways to combine and analyze data in collaboration with CureMido. Within the scientific community, there seems to be a lack of communication and collaboration between researchers for these conditions.
To do this, we're very excited to announce that we're organizing the first MTA ARS Scientific Symposium on February tenth with world-renowned doctors and researchers. We invite all of you to attend, speak, and/or present. The details can be found on our website at www.curears.org. We have listened to some very powerful updates on drug development and clinical trials today. We want to thank all of our patient organizations, pharmaceutical companies, and researchers for dedicating your life's work to helping the Mido community. We look forward to what 2022 has to offer.
I was just going to share my screen really fast, so you guys could see our website. This is our website and the symposium, and you know, you can go here to see the speakers and, you know, please reach out to us if you would like to be involved. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, and we'll be sure to share information. Just Mido Action will be participating with you in that upcoming conference, and we look forward to having the community get more involved. So we'll also be continuing to share that information and connecting people with your organization. So thank you both so much. We appreciate you. Next up, we have Joe DeBry, who is the Communications Manager for IMP, the International Mitro Patients Association. Joe, welcome.
Hi, Kyra. Thank you so much. Good afternoon and good evening to everybody. And as Kara said, I'm Joe DeBry, and Communications Manager at the International Mitro Patients, or IMP for short. And thanks so much to everyone for your interesting, thought-blowing, and inspiring updates. It's so exciting to hear about all the work that's taking place around the world. For those of you that don't know, IMP is an umbrella organization for mitochondrial disease patient advocacy groups around the world. We currently represent- We're currently represented by 17 organizations across three different continents. Over the last 10 years, IMP has brought together national patient organizations from around the world. We've facilitated international discussions about mitochondrial diseases, led workshops for our clinician, researcher, and pharmaceutical partners, supported thousands of patients and their families worldwide, and we continue to uncover new ways for the global mito community to work together for the good of patients and their families. Through strengthening relationships with clinicians, researchers, scientists, and industry, and working with groups such as the European Organization for Rare Diseases and European Reference Networks and many others, IMP continues to make an impact on an international scale. Our mission is to increase the quality of life for people with mito by facilitating cross-border cooperation and collaboration amongst patient organizations. Best practices are shared, and the development of appropriate pathways and management of mitochondrial diseases are advanced. We continue to be a bridge between patients, clinicians, scientists, industry, and policymakers with the goal of the advancement, development, and access to treatments and cures, no matter where you live in the world and what type of mito you have. Some of our most exciting initiatives include the creation of a global mitochondrial disease patient registry. I'm going to echo what Lori, Casey, and Elizabeth said earlier, in that registries are an incredibly valuable source of information. And you can find out a little bit more about the registry on our website. It'll be a non-clinical databank of mitochondrial disease patients around the world, and it's part of the International Genomic Project, which our project will link to a new international clinical registry, and we hope it will provide key insights and to help researchers and clinicians better understand mitochondrial diseases with the hope that this critical information will advance the development of therapies and ultimately lead to cures, which I know is what we all want. IMP is also a partner in the International Research Project Cure Mills, which aims to develop therapies for mitochondrial DNA-associated Lee syndrome. We've developed the list of medicines to be used with caution by mito patients. The list was created by 16 international experts who reviewed 50 drugs, and that list will be regularly updated to ensure that the guidance stays current and is available to view on our website. In 2019, IMP was involved in the publication of a quality-of-life study that confirmed that chronic pain is experienced by the majority of adult mitochondrial disease patients, which I'm sure a lot of you are very well aware of. Along with fatigue, chronic pain is a core symptom which is often overlooked. Currently, a new quality-of-life study is underway, focusing on everyday coping strategies for 8- to 18-year-old mito patients. And of course, IMP is proud to lead the annual mitochondrial disease awareness week each September. The campaign raises global awareness of mito, which challenges the challenges faced day to day by our community and the urgent need for increased research and therapy development. This year, World Mitochondrial Disease Week will take place from the 18th to the 24th of September, so please do mark it in your diaries. And I was so excited to get confirmation of the new Awareness Day set up by TK2D, which, as we were told earlier, is going to be the 13th of September, just before when the week starts. Light Up Mitom is part of Awareness Week. It's an internationally recognized aspect of the campaign, where monuments and landmarks are illuminated in green during a 24-hour period. There'll be the finale of Awareness Week this year, and it falls on the 24th of September. In 2020, IMP hosted the inaugural LHON Awareness Day, and this now annual event is marked on the 19th of September. It brings together LHON patients and patient groups and raises the profile of this particular type of mitochondrial disease. IMP offers support to families where there's no local patient advocacy organization, and individuals can contact IMP for support, access resources and services, and importantly, find a listening ear where they need it most. It's vital for people affected by mito to know that whatever challenges they face, with whatever mitochondrial disease they have, they're not alone. We know that patients, family members, caregivers, and loved ones can feel isolated geographically, emotionally, and socially, and with some forms of mito being desperately rare, it can be difficult to find others with the same condition. IMP is proud to help facilitate connections internationally with people experiencing similar conditions. IMP communicates via our Facebook page, website, and e-newsletter. We also have a closed Facebook group for people directly affected by mito. This virtual support group includes people from around the world with many different types of mito and at different stages of their journey. Members offer support, share experiences, and provide a safe space to connect with others affected. It's amazing to hear from so many patient organizations today, and for those of you who aren't already members of IMP, if it is something that you're interested in, please get in touch, either with myself or with Kyra, who's actually the Chair of IMP, so also knows a huge amount about the organization. IMP is really proud to be the global voice for the mito community. Thank you so much for your time today. Please get in touch with any questions. Follow us on Facebook or visit the website, mitopatience.org, to find out more. And thanks so much, Kyra, for the opportunity to speak to you all today. I'm really excited to hear more about the trials and projects throughout 2020 and for us to share them with the international mito community.
Thank you, Joe, so much for being here. I know it's late in the evening for you, so I appreciate you taking the time to be here, but I think it's really important as we continue to have a global reach and all that we're all doing, that IMP is upfront and have an active voice in everything that we do. And as always, I'm honored to serve as the Board Chair of IMP and to lead the organization. So thank you so much, Joe. We appreciate you. Have a good evening, and we'll talk soon.
Thank you.
Take care. Up next, we have Brian Harwin, who is the President and CEO of UMDF. Welcome, Brian.
Thank you, Kyra. Thank you to Mito Action for hosting today's call. We appreciate the opportunity to give an update, and thanks to so many of you who are on this call, who have made UMDF and our PAG colleagues a priority in your charitable giving. All these updates that we are giving today are powered by your generosity, so thank you for that. We're excited to kick off 2022 at UMDF, as we've recently wrapped up our 25th anniversary, celebrating 25 years of powering research, providing education, support, and bringing our voice to those making decisions affecting our community. On those fronts, UMDF has a robust agenda ahead. Along with our partners, from our scientific admission portfolio standpoint, we continue to advance the International Lee Syndrome Roadmap Project. On the horizon is the announcement of a new set of competitive research grant winners and the launch of a multinational natural history project, so stay tuned to that. Speaking of grants, the UMDF's Competitive Research Grant Program kicks off this month. We have funded over $13 million in grants over our history, and once again, this year we are spotlighting our Accelerators Program that aims to find and fund promising post-doctoral fellows. You can learn more about this innovative program that bridges fast science and engaged philanthropy at umdf.org. Since the early 2000s, UMDF has been advancing patient care and research through patient registry initiatives. The latest generation of that effort, Mitoshare, is soon to launch. This new online registry populated by mitochondrial disease patients and caregivers creates an opportunity for participants to play an active role and contribute to the research efforts surrounding mitochondrial disease. Registration to be live in the coming weeks on umdf.org. And we know the quickest, most accurate way to confirm mitochondrial disease is a genetic test. That's why, together with our friends at Zogenics, we've launched the UMDF Pilot Genetic Testing Project, a collaborative initiative to provide qualified candidates of all ages a complimentary genetic test to fast-track a mitochondrial disease diagnosis. This program launches next week, so be sure to visit umdf.org to learn more about the program. Educating and providing support for our community has been and will continue to be a priority in 2022. As Dr. Kira mentioned, improving of patient care is a tenet of the UMDF of Mito Action. So many of us on this call today, and we're delighted to team up with the Mitochondrial Medicine Society and Mito Action on the mitochondrial care network effort. Plans are underway for our signature event, Mitochondrial Medicine Symposium, to be held in person in Phoenix, Arizona, June 8th through the 11th. So save the date for our symposium. You can stay tuned to umdf.org/symposium for more information and program updates on this special event that brings together the patient-family community, clinical and scientific communities. While we love the thunderclap of information that is shared at our symposium, we know information is something that our community needs every day, and that's why we continue to develop fresh and relevant content on our MitouU Educational Hub, host our monthly Ask the Mitodoc web series, connect the research community through our Bench to Bedside Program, and recently launching a new clinical trials online resource and finder tool, all while bringing unique perspectives by way of creative programming like the Powerhouse Podcast. Subscribing to our YouTube channel and checking our events calendar on umdf.org is a great way to make sure you stay informed. And we're proud to announce that last year, we recruited our 100th Support Ambassador. Our ambassadors are a group of dedicated volunteers that understand what patient families are experiencing, and are here to listen, talk, and offer a shoulder to lean on. You can connect with our patient concierge on our website and connect with an ambassador today. And lastly, we continue to dedicate time and resources to bringing the patient voice to Capitol Hill and regulatory bodies in our effort to fight for patient-friendly legislation and help advance treatments. We're kicking off our 2022 legislative agenda with a focus on access to care and reimbursement, and we join with Mito Action and TK2D Cures to host a patient-listening session with the Food and Drug Administration later this month. This is an opportunity for our patients to share the burden of the disease with the FDA. Keeping that drumbeat going is critical to amplifying our voice, and you can visit our website to get involved with these efforts and everything shared today. Thank you once again, and a shout out to everyone on this call for your tireless efforts in advancing our cause. Thanks, Kyra.
Thanks so much, Brian. We appreciate it. We're excited to be working with UMDF on all these great initiatives and look forward to a great 2022 together. Thank you so much. Next up, we have Keith McIntyre, who is the Coordinator for INFORM. Welcome, Keith.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, am I on the camera?
You are, and you've got an amazing background behind you.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Hey, well, I just wanted to share with you some of the facts about INFORM and also a little bit of our history. INFORM stands for the International Network for Fatty Acid Oxidation Research and Management, and we are the only scientific organization focused on fatty acid oxidation disorders. We provide regular forums and interactions with families, clinicians, and researchers. We hold the only FAOD scientific-specific conference worldwide, and as you all know, FAODs can range from neonatal to adult onset. Their overall incidence of FAODs is about 1 in 10,000 individuals, and approximately well over 400 affected babies born each year in the United States with FAODs. The history of INFORM, it started out in its beginnings as actually a failed NIH grant application to establish an NIH-sponsored rare disease research network in fatty acid oxidation disorders. One of the key criticisms of the application was that the participating centers did not demonstrate a record of working together enough. So to rectify that, we established a yearly meeting to allow collaborating centers to interact face-to-face, present state-of-the-art research, and to share the best practices and treatments in fatty acid oxidation disorders. We also included a component to support interested families and patient members and to participate in our meetings, and we now have held over eight meetings. Our first six were face-to-face, where we drew approximately 140 participants. Over the past two years, during our virtual meetings, we had over 180 registered participants, and hopefully, we will get back to a face-to-face meeting this year in Freiburg, Germany, preceding the SSI. Our steering committee of international experts on fatty acid oxidation disorders helped plan the agenda and set the meeting, as well as they vet any potential speakers, they evaluate abstracts that have been submitted by the attendees for consideration for participation. We give a heavy leaning toward new researchers, and the program is broad-based. It bridges clinical and research issues and includes patients and patient advocates. Funding to support our program is provided by interested industry sponsors through unrestricted educational fund grants and individual donors. All these funds are managed by the Children's Hospital of Pittsburgh Foundation, and a final report is also sent to each of them detailing the expenses provided for the conference. Our conference has become recognized as the premier meeting on fatty acid oxidation disorders worldwide, and it brings significant visibility to the Children's Hospital of Pittsburgh. As a leader in this field, in turn, this recognition brings international referrals to our Center of Rare Disease Therapy and helps attract the best national and international trainees and to our clinical and laboratory programs. It also identifies Children's Hospital as a logical site to develop and pursue clinical trials and novel therapies for this disorder, which in turn allows the clinical research enterprise of CHP to grow and also focuses on our international colleagues. So our purpose really is to bring families, clinicians, researchers together for a better and further understanding of the treatment of FAODs. Some of the things that are offered to our clinicians or clinical communities on our website is the network of international medical professionals and interactions with other investigators. We also have a virtual tissue bank, which we are going to put a push on this year to ask research labs to enter data information so that they can see what others are doing and they can collaborate with other researchers. Of course, our annual meeting, which I mentioned earlier, is being planned for Freiburg, Germany in the end of August, that's August 28th and 29th, and there are many educational materials available on our website. And one of the things that grew out of this pandemic was our INFORM lecture series, where typically, we had junior investigators present at our live meeting, and because we did not want to stretch out our virtual meetings, we decided to develop the INFORM lecture series, so those junior investigators do present there. The first set of investigators are presenting this month, starting the 24th, and you can see all of the lectures that are coming up on our website at informnetwork.org. What we offer the patients and the families is probably one of the very robust Ask the Expert section. I encourage you to send your patients and families there. Perhaps they'll see a question that they're thinking about. All these questions are answered by Dr. Jerry Vockley and his colleagues, and they're usually answered in a very quick manner. So you can see that on, again, informnetwork.org. Again, there's a lot of educational materials available to them, information about clinical trials and research studies. Last year, we added three new testimonials. I encourage you to go out there and encourage you to send your patients there to watch them. They're very inspiring videos by Alex, Christopher, and Jordan. Of course, our annual meeting opportunities we have for families. This year, we are going to be working with Mito Action to hold a separate family event at INFORM 2022 in Freiburg, so we're looking forward to that. Obviously, the growth of our website is something that we're very proud of. Last year, we had over 24,000 views to the website, and then in April this year, we developed some new components to the website, as well as added a new search engine optimization, and we're not even a year into that yet, and we have well over 46,000 views to our website, and I'm sure we'll hit 50,000 by April. So we really have doubled the traffic to our website through these new tools. So I encourage you to go out and view our website. Again, it's informnetwork.org, and contact me, and if you'd like to be on the mailing list for the lecture series, please send me an email, and I'll see that you could get on that mailing list. Thank you very much for allowing me to share this information with you today.
Thanks so much, Keith, for being here. We are excited to partner with INFORM on our conference, and we're really excited for the new initiative to be able to bring a patient element to the conference this year. So we're really looking forward to working with you and Dr. Vockley on that initiative. Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate you. Next up, we have Catherine Mulville, who is the Chief Development Officer with Mitocanada. Welcome, Catherine. Welcome, Catherine. But we can't hear you. We can see your screen, but we can't hear you.
How's that?
There you go.
There we go. I was just saying, thank you very much for inviting us to be part of this and just bringing such an awesome group together. There's so much information being shared. It's wonderful, wonderful to be a part of it. So thank you very much, Cara. So very quickly, just wanted to introduce everyone to Mitocanada. For those who were on the call last year, you might remember that my partner in crime, Kate Murray, and I took over the reins at Mitocanada. It's an organization that's been around for 11 years now and founded by a group of parents who had children who had mitochondrial disease and didn't want to be victims and wanted to really try and find solutions for their families. So in the last year or so, Kate and I have been working to try and move Mitocanada forward from being that grassroots organization and maintain all of the wonderful things that are associated with that and take it to the next level so that it can be one of the leading health charities in Canada. So probably the biggest thing that's different for us is that we changed our focus from being solely on mitochondrial disease to trying to focus on mitochondrial health, whether that means protecting people so that they don't develop mitochondrial disease in the first place or helping to restore mitochondrial health. So lots to be done in that area. And like many of the patient organizations that are out there, we really want to improve quality of life for patients. We want to support awareness and education. For us, it's the umbrella under mitochondrial disease and all those that are associated with it. Create communities that are empowered, inspired and connected. And I'll show you some of the ways that we're trying to do that. Advocate for those who are living with, but also those who are at risk of developing mitochondrial disease. And that, you know, the risk of developing, I think, is something that's really important for all of us to be taking a look at. And then funding research. So in the last year, we've started to build some of the education programs that we would like to see that are specific to Canada. There are so many great resources around the world, but we found that some of them are lacking for our own country. So we have started building some education guides with the supportive industry through unrestricted educational grants through PTC and Ultragenics and Reneo and others that are out there. So we're very thankful for their support. So new education guides that we have, primary mitochondrial disease, understanding McCardles, taking a look at building a new program. And Cara, you and I have actually talked about doing this together to try and support patients who are newly diagnosed. So, you know, whether it's explaining to family or in the community or at school or at work, what the individual is actually dealing with and how to help them navigate through medications and treatments and the frustrations that often go along with either being diagnosed and or caring for someone who has a mitochondrial disease. One of the things that we've done in our past history is create educational animations, and we just find that's a really great way to get an awful lot of information out to an audience in a really quick way. So, you know, over three or four minutes trying to describe what mitochondrial disease is a bit of a challenge. But when you have the tools of animation working on your side, it makes it a little bit easier. So we were lucky enough to work with a student and the University of Winnipeg earlier this year, and we developed three on mitochondrial disease diagnosing mito and then ospos. And hopefully in the next couple of months, we'll have a new one on the importance that exercise plays in mitochondrial health. From the roots of Mitocanada, we've always really been about supporting each other. So telling those stories, making sure that people, you know, don't get caught up in what's the name of the disease alone and what is the specific gene mutation, which obviously are very important, but who are the people who are living behind those tags? And we've had wonderful opportunities to meet some new people in the mitochondrial community in Canada, and we've told their stories and been lucky enough to be able to share those in some of the national papers that we have here. But they're on our website as well that we can take a look at it. And then, you know, I think what we're finding is that Mitro families are amazing. Some of you are here today, you know, where you respond to having a new diagnosis for a child or someone else in your family where you've never even heard of what the disease is, and yet it totally disrupts the world that you're in. And we want to make sure that we're protecting people and finding solutions. So I have found it incredibly rewarding and humbling to speak to some of the families and the individuals who are living with mitochondrial disease and would encourage everyone to really go and take a look at these two in particular. They're the newest ones, but the moms in these cases have some really heartfelt, practical advice to offer those who are newly diagnosed or well into the journey of caring for children who have mitochondrial disease and a little bit of self-discovery as well. They really are remarkable people. Another one of our superheroes is a young man named Thomas Sappus, who is living with mitochondrial disease and has a really wonderful attitude. It's really nice to have a teenager, I think, yeah, early twenties right now. But he wrote a book that is for families, not necessarily with mitochondrial disease, but with some sort of disability and really highlights how incredible each one of us are and that we have things that we can offer and wonderful ways to take a look at the world around us. So he really challenges you through a very simple text that we offered to animate for him. So he's got an actual book of superheroes like me, but there's also an animation that you can look at on our website as well. And again, would encourage everyone to take a look at that and really consider what is a superhero? Because I think most of us who are in the Mitro community are superheroes in one way or another. Very much like we just heard from UMDF is that we would like to ensure that those who are at risk of developing mitochondrial disease are those who are living with it but are undiagnosed to make sure that there's equitable access to genomic testing so that you can get the diagnosis and the care and move on with the best quality of life possible. So this is a new program for us that we are looking to still have funded and develop in 2022. Like many of the people on the call or the organizations on the call, we too have introduced a patient contact registry that's new for us. And I think, you know, we all agree that it's really about uniting patients and caregivers, providing access to new treatments and therapies, sharing experiences and knowledge, and making sure that we can bring together the knowledge, to build a collective knowledge from all the people that have been working in silos up until now and to allow patients and patient families to try and support each other as they go through this journey, because it really is a journey that we're all on together. And I think collectively, we're going to change the trajectory and help each other. We too have introduced a new program this year. The first two of our Mitro scholarships are being supported by Ultragenics, and we recognize that life as a young adult is difficult enough. When you add mitochondrial disease on top of it, the expenses, the energy expenditure, it's just that much more difficult to get through post-secondary education. So we decided that we would introduce four, hopefully in 2022, possibly more, $5,000 scholarships for those who are living with mitochondrial disease and that this would fund, that money would go directly towards funding tuition, student fees, materials or education or residency for those that are looking for post-secondary education in Canada. And this past year, 2021, we supported $70,000 in new research, and these are just some of the faces that are behind those research initiatives. We're really proud that it's very broad-based, lots of diversity in what we're trying to do. But again, very much trying to pull the information together so that we can understand why mitochondrial disease happens, what actually happens to the individuals, and what are the solutions that we can develop and introduce to ensure the quality of life is the best that it possibly can be. And finally, just a little bit of fun stuff. So we have two annual major fundraisers that we're focusing on. I know we have lots of little ones on the side, but the next one that's coming up is called the Mitro Spin. That's happening on February 26th. It is for Mitocanada, but it's a virtual event. So anybody who can have access to a stationary bike is welcome to join us and would encourage you to take a look at it and, you know, share your voice, share your energy and be part of that experience with us. And this is us. So again, Kate Murray is the one who is co-leading Mitocanada with us, and we would encourage you to reach out with any ideas, questions, collaborations that you're interested in taking part in with us. So here, Cara, thank you again for inviting us and to everybody else for sharing all of the information that you did today. We think it's a remarkable community and we're so proud to be part of it.
Thank you so much, Catherine. We appreciate you guys. You have done such an amazing job in the short time that you've been there and launched a lot of really, really critical initiatives for the Canadian community, and we look forward to working with you on some educational initiatives in 2022.
Perfect. Thanks so much.
So much. So for our final presenter of the day, please join me in welcoming Joan Bishop, who is the Executive Director for the Olay Foundation. Welcome, Joan.
Oh, thank you for having us, Cara. Honestly, if I could pull my notes up, that would be good, wouldn't it? Let me start by just introducing the Olay Foundation, nonprofit organization to enhance the lives of those living with home parental and/or enteral nutrition. And we do support our mission through education advocacy and networking. HBN Patient Outcome Data showed that those affiliated with the Olay Foundation have fewer catheter-related bloodstream infections, less reactive depression, and a significantly higher of life or higher quality of life. With this data in hand, we continue to be motivated to offer a bi-monthly newsletter with a circulation of over 25,000. We generate awareness of Olay through events like this. We host annual meetings, and ours is also being planned in June and in person for the first time in a while, but with a virtual component so that we can shift as needed. And truthfully, many of what we learned last year with an exclusive virtual meeting is that many people just are never going to be able to come in person. So I think we'll always have that component. But our meeting is also going to be held in the northeast site to be determined, but this is all with our fingers crossed that we start the planning. I wanted to note that all of our program services are available free to members. While COVID kept us isolated the last two years, we created a community enrichment program. And this program includes a series of mini-meetings that used to be regional meetings. There are half-day programs covering a variety of topics. Recordings always available on olay.org. And the other component to the enrichment programs, the series of one-hour webinars, again, with live presentations, Q and A recordings available. Advocacy efforts for Olay include but not limited to keeping the home nutrition support patient consumers' voice front and center whenever possible. Celebrating both Home Rental Nutrition Week in October, Tube Feeding Awareness Weeks in February. Also doing some advocacy for new ICD codes to help uncover the sheer volume of people suffering from intestinal failure. Once you dig into how the visits, office visits are billed, it's just amazing. It's just amazing through many different avenues. It's hard to really come to a number of people who are being cared for with intestinal failure in general, and there's more to follow on that later as we get into the more specific categories under intestinal failure. We recently worked with Medscape to coordinate a program to showcase the best ways to support the transition from pediatric practice to adult programs. There's huge gaps in adult programs, so it's best if we can get people prepared for that, best prepared anyway. We are finally, it seems like we've been working on this for years, but we're finally looking at launching a Find a Healthcare Professional to help members find clinical programs to meet their needs. I can, and honestly, I have a few gray hairs up here, just while we've worked on that. We also have a network of volunteers, ambassadors, formerly regional coordinators, who serve as the face of Olay in their community. And communities used to be defined as geographic regions, but now it's more like they're social media communities. But whatever, however, it just works to always have access to appear. It's very helpful. We host support group meetings. We have virtual meetings for adults, young adults, and even a kids' club where it's more like game playing or Halloween party where the kids dress up and get in front of the computer. And it's just proven to be excellent ways to create a community for people in the different age groups. Personally, I belong to a senior group, but let's not talk about that. We're active in recruiting members for market research projects and for clinical studies. I'm going to make a pitch here. If you're not an Olay member, please consider joining, adding your profile to the database so we can connect with you if the study is available. And if you are a member, please sign in and review your profile and update it if it's needed. In closing, I sincerely want to applaud each of you for all of your efforts. Wish you all Godspeed and moving forward. I also want to echo Mitro Action's interest in collaborating. We are awful, we all offer important pieces of the puzzle that help, but together we can seriously enhance lives. I look forward to partnering with all of you. If it's only to share links on websites, let's do this. Happy New Year. Thank you, Cara, and all of Mitro Action for inviting Olay to this table.
Thank you, Joan. We appreciate you, and I appreciate your patience today. We definitely ran quite a bit over, but I appreciate you hanging in there with us.
That's okay. It was really awesome. It was a pleasure.
Thank you so much. Well, everyone, that brings us to the end of today's program. I want to thank all of today's speakers for taking the time to share with the community. As we've heard today, we have an army of clinicians, researchers, advocates, caregivers, families and more who are all working tirelessly to support the Mitro community, bring treatments to market and ensure that anyone affected by mitochondrial disease knows they are not alone on this journey. Working side by side, we are all stronger together. We are here for you to support you in any way you need. Reach out to us, utilize the available resources, and continue to let us know how we can make your lives easier. And never forget, hope is on the horizon. Thank you so much, everyone. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Cara.
Thanks, Keith. Take care.